First thing on the agenda, we're going to switch things here. On the agenda, we have a consideration of application. You can't leave that open for consultation and so forth. We're going to move that behind the hearing and conduct the hearing first. And we have a hearing. And I'll be reading the notice to you. This is a public notice and legal hearing. Notice that Chairman Devin, in accordance with RSA 676:4 and 675:7, that the Minnesota Planning Board will hold a public hearing for subdivision by the Reed and Perpel family trust. Did I connect that right?
Right.
Right, sorry. Map lot six located on Pinkham Road on August 8th, 2024 at 6:30 PM at Old Town Hall, 212 Highway. Should a decision not be reached at a public hearing, the application will stay on the planning board's agenda until time is either approved or disapproved. Anyone needing assistance in attending this meeting should contact the select board's office one week prior to the scheduled date. Sure, Mr. Planning Board. Roger, Melissa, and Clark. Okay. So. You want me to explain, or you want?
I can. No. So essentially what's happened here is we proposed a three lot subdivision. And it was brought to John's attention that wetlands cannot be counted towards the total five acre minimum. Now, you guys already approved three, two or three subdivisions of ours that had that. But here we are now where, you know, John and I discussed this over a week. I mean, I think we're at a place that just going to have to do whatever the board has to do. I mean, you know, from this point forward, we'll have to comply with that statute that the wetlands cannot be considered part of five acre lot. And that's from the Larchette District overlay. So what John and I discussed to do was I'd like to continue the hearings until next month so I can get my plans revised and come out with a two lots.
Okay. Just so everybody knows what Mr. Perpel referred to, in our zoning ordinance, there is Article 21. Section F is the one that is that criteria.
One sentence. It says it's one sentence.
Well, it's there.
No, but I mean, it's one sentence. That's what it connects.
Yeah, well, it's one of them, but it's there. So we must comply with that when they take a look at that. So if you would like to, we can recess the hearing till the next meeting, which would be September 12th. September 12th. Okay. Now, does anybody have any comments and questions?
How much of the land is wetland on each? Like, how much of the five acres is? Just out of curiosity.
The percentage, I'm not sure.
I can tell you.
It's in the.
It's 2.44 buildable areas, upland areas on lot six, 1.7 buildable area on six nine, and 0.74 buildable area on map six.
If I may add, that is in the water report, which is quite an extensive report. That is in the supply pool of the application. If you need a copy of that, it's right there. This is a map.
So is there more wetland than there is buildable land for a comparison of like?
Trying to divide into, it goes, the way you determine that, whether a wetland or not, it has to be done by the weapons inventory. Here's a picture of the weapons inventory. I can pass this out to you, but this is Pinkham. And there are three lots in here that they're trying to subdivide. And one of them takes into consideration this one and this one. So what he's going to have to do, they're going to have to redesign and redefine so that a lot, whatever weapons are there, equal five acres.
Without the weapons.
Without the weapons.
Okay, so it's going to be five non-wetland acres.
Right. It could, yeah, right.
So it could potentially be really crazy.
It could be like 15 acres, but only five are non, 10, 15 wetlands or something, same like that.
Okay.
But as long as it's going to have the five non-wet.
Thirty acres.
There's 15 acres there.
Fifteen acres.
According to my survey, it will configure as two lots with five acres about.
Five non-wet acres.
The map there shows a graphic representation of where the weapons are. And so that's, that's what he's going to have to do for us to actually approve the subdivision, okay? Because we can't approve it and it would be a non-compliant rule. If it only did it before, it would actually be.
We've been in line.
Yes, we've been in line. Thank you very much.
Do you need us to make a motion to?
No, I have another comment. Is there something wrong with the setbacks?
What do you mean setbacks? Oh, I don't know.
We have front setbacks in this town of what, 50 feet and 20 feet side?
Yep.
And so it's front 20 feet and side 15 feet.
We'll change the parameters on the file. Yeah, no problem.
It's got to be corrected.
It will be corrected. Are we willing to set up?
Do you need to make a motion to recess? I'll make a motion then we recess the hearing until September 12th.
Still moving.
Is that a second?
Second, yes.
Any discussion? No, she carries.
How many days have we been to plans since we've already done application, notified of others?
Ten days, ten days.
Okay. Yeah, here's another topic here. Drive, oh, I'm not going to talk.
Oh, you're very good.
Okay? Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Appreciate it, guys. Do you want to read that?
Oh, yeah. That'd be great.
Brief.
Some light reading?
Well, it's, I don't think it's long yet. Okay. All right. We'll take care of that. We have a guest here this evening, Michael Pal, Michael Pal here. Michael is a prospective buyer on lot number four, map four lot seven, 97 acres. He's coming before the board to make, he's proposing what to do with the lot. And he wants to show us what they propose to do the lot and wants to get our advice as to whether he can proceed before he puts a penny down on the law.
Do we get a map? Can we get a map?
Thank you.
Oh, crap. I don't know where I am.
I've got a little bigger idea. Why don't you put that right there? Put that part of that up there.
Oh, that's what I need. I just got my eyes examined and.
I want a staple. They couldn't do it. And there was a PDF available, so.
All right.
Probably do it. So this one, this is. And. And this is where it is. See that? You guys familiar with this piece?
Yeah, that's what I need.
I'm familiar with the town here.
It's right here.
Yes.
You should, right? That's what you do.
So it's right here?
Yeah, it's open. It's 97 acres.
So is this the, oh, this is one that abuts New Durham and, okay.
Correct, correct.
I know where you're now.
It's a good sized piece, you know what I mean?
It's a good sized piece.
Does any of this, does any of this go into New Durham? Because I know New Durham isn't, so it's right before the.
That's the line.
It's just the New Durham line here?
No, Durham's here. This is all literally finished. Remember, this is south.
Okay, so, okay, that's Christine. I'm up here. So, okay, see here.
You live up here?
Well, I live right on Karen, but I.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So, okay, so you are that big, okay. And that's New Durham. Okay, yeah, I don't know him.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. You guys didn't see this?
Well, let me just.
Well, just looking at this versus looking at that?
Try this one. I'm just figuring her around here. Silver street right here.
I know the one that I did not do it in, and the book was in the operating. Everywhere else.
Well, I looked at this. I don't know, so.
Well, yeah. It doesn't prove that. I need to get readers.
I always read it for her. I mean, I need a small one.
Okay. Okay. So now we know where it is. Now we know where it is. And you guys see that? All right. Go ahead.
I was talking to Janet, because I came before the board about a year ago. And we proposed this to them and see how they feel. And I had a guy that's going to help me do it, but he took another road. Got this huge company that's doing extremely well. And I followed his, I followed him to say. So on this piece, what we want to propose is in the RV park. Janet looked at the regs and Vern Deegan looked at the regs. And if you put a mobile home park, you can put two houses per acre.
Is this?
Okay, go ahead, John.
When you say an RV, are you talking about the mobile home?
Okay, so it's not an RV, it's a mobile home.
Thank you.
An RV to me would be something.
Manufacturing housing.
Yeah, I know, it's a mobile home.
Yeah, it's manufactured housing.
Yes. Once you hit the actual block, does that.
We've had this discussion once.
We've been schooled.
So it's a mobile home park.
Okay, that's, that was one of your questions. Yes, that was mine too, because I'm like totally two different.
Thank you for spinning me out.
So it's not campers like?
Right, well, right, because you say RV, I'm thinking.
No, mobile home.
Not five star camping, it's like real.
The second you go to Google, and if you go to TikTok and you put in mobile home, you're going to get bombarded with manufactured homes. And you.
No, it's probably a manufactured housing, it's different than a mobile home park or an RV park. If you're going to have an RV park, it's better parked in town.
Yeah, yeah. To put in, no, it's a mobile home park. And it really nice, they love income at the same time.
No, there are nice manufactured home parks in the area.
Absolutely.
We try to, that's what, that's what we're hoping for.
Oh, that's what, that's my goal, because I don't want to put money into anything. It's just the way it is. So, and at the same time, you want to put in there a nice rec hall, something that people, you know, that even the town most views. This is good, and we have another seven place if you want to do anything. And we won't put a lot of walking trails in this thing.
How many houses?
How many homes, how many units you want to put? Well, the engineer said this, Vern Deegan said this, because there's a hundred acres. And the way he made it up, there's a hundred right here. A hundred units. You don't have to, because it's a hundred acres. It's almost a hundred acres. And if you can get two houses per acre, mobile homes, then that qualifies, so yeah.
Because some wet, there might be wetlands in there.
Yeah, there's a little.
There's some wetlands back there, so.
Oh, yeah. The engineers, by the time they're done, will know exactly what it is. But those, that's, the coast numbers are a little bit.
So you're looking for a hundred houses, a hundred mobile homes, manufactured homes, whatever, not RVs.
Right, exactly.
And is this going to be geared towards anybody and everybody?
No, 55 and older.
Is there going to be rules or covenants or anything that?
Yes, absolutely. No, no kids can stay there more than a week. Those grandparents get, you know, I'm a grandfather, I have five grandkids. And I don't want to, because that's not.
So.
If you want it, John.
The roads that are in this.
Paved, rather than paved, and sewers are going to be there, the septic, it's all going to be there.
And those would be all maintained, they're all private, they would all be private and maintained, those would not be.
Correct.
Will they be individual septic systems, or will they be?
No. Yes, the tank will be individual, the field is going to be a cluster. But whatever.
Who's going to maintain the road?
By the condo association.
Private road?
Yes. So the condo will not do it. Shouldn't cross the condo anyway.
So it's private roads?
And that's in rule, that's in the rule for the venture system, correct?
Does that change after?
No, no.
No, it's just we need to.
We need to know where it is now. The current property.
Oh, so the current property is in Lee, the town, between its bad taxes. And also the property is in current use.
Yes, we know.
So, right, so when it comes out of current use, penalty, I don't say it's not a penalty, it's.
10% is the market value.
Is that considered a penalty?
No, it's a tax, it's 10% of market value.
Right, so 10%, yes.
Of what?
Of the market value of the property, we have to be paid because it's been.
So I have some.
And the town owns that land right now?
What's that?
Does the town?
No, but it's in Lee.
Oh, okay.
So it can't be sold until it gets taken out.
Yep, we'll follow.
So I have, I have some concerns that this is a lot of structure, a lot. And 55 and older, that's fine, I get that. But it's still a lot of structures. I would, me, I would look at this as a site plan type of scenario. And when you look at the site plan, there's a lot of things you need to do.
Oh, absolutely.
You need to do traffic studies, you need to do water stuff, weapons stuff, wildlife studies, all that kind of stuff that needs to be taken into account, given us to take a look at. The septic system, I know of other developers that have cluster septic, sewage fields. There are some that actually have not only tanks per se, they actually have sewers.
Yeah.
And they divide them up. The one particular development that I saw didn't have this mix.
But for the size of property, it's, it's not, you know, all the elements are like, all punched together, and that looks pretty.
Well, I don't, I don't dispute your design and trying to make it aesthetic and so forth and so on. I appreciate you trying to put in trails for, because part of this, part of our intent is open space. I suppose this could be considered under cluster housing, but I haven't investigated that, looked at that yet. Certainly appreciate you putting up a community center, because that's typically what you would do in an institution or at that expense, things such as this. So I guess those are some of my concerns. And again, the impact studies would probably be required. Well, there's a lot of traffic, there'd be a lot of traffic.
Wow. This, this she was, this all this.
So not all of that, not all of that, not all of those lots are built on?
Okay.
And a good portion of those are seasonal?
Yeah.
So they're not here all the time?
And they also predate.
And they predate everything?
Predate a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So in that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
So in about, in that area, I can tell you, because I'm the association secretary and treasurer, in that area, there's roughly about 200 properties that I mail out to. But only 78 are owned, the other ones are town owned. So.
Anything on the water?
Nothing's, no, nothing is on the water for, no, not unless you get a million. And so, and I can even tell you this, right here is not built. This isn't a road. It was a road that they put in 60 years ago, but never did anything with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you come up here and you look, this is, there's one house here, and all of this is woods.
Right.
There's nothing here, and it's land blocked. So it's very deceiving, because you think that this is all built on, and it is not. So like this strip, there's nothing here. All right here, there is one, two, maybe three houses on this side. Everything else is woods. This here is association property. Same thing with here, there's a couple of houses here, but a good portion is still woods. Down here, once you get down here, all of back here is woods. So a lot of that, so it's very deceiving. So when you look at this and you say like, well, it's done here, so.
Right.
This is, this is double that, so what's the big deal? Well, this is 60-year-old development. When this was first developed, it was developed as a seasonal Boston people coming up for, you know, they dropped their wives off.
Yeah, yeah.
They literally like would drop their wives off on the weekends, spend the weekend with them. Husbands would go back down to Boston and work, and then come back on Saturday. And that's how this was for years. And now it's, you know.
And they still do it too. I mean, a bunch of guys do that.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I mean, it's very, when you look at it, black and white, and you see the squares, it's deceiving from.
It's most deceiving.
From what reality is.
Whereas you're looking, you're like, oh, that's 400 units right over there, or something like that.
Yeah, that, that would not.
That, that's not the case.
That would not be.
Possible.
Possible to, in today's world.
Correct.
This was done prior to. We still struggle with.
We struggle with a lot of issues with here.
We struggle with this, this whole configuration, don't we think?
Oh, we do.
Well, you have, this is going to be well managed. And we want to spend the bucks on the center and on the road. So when you walk and you drive in spring, it's pleasurable. It's not going to be a stink on you, no.
Well, the other thing I question is, is with that many properties together in septic systems, who oversees that? Like, would it be each individual person being responsible for making sure that they do service? Are you guys that have like rules in to say you must pump every two years?
Yeah, we could put covenants in that for that. And I believe that a lot of.
The person, sorry, people wouldn't own land. It would be a mobile home park.
Well, some places.
You own the land, they rent, they pay a lot rent.
Yeah.
So it would be, to me, the owners would be on the, the land owner to make sure they're a good steward to.
Yeah, usually the woods and regs comes with septic.
You know, they, of course, was, but like, if, if there was an issue, the town goes to the owner and says, hey, you're not complying with A, B, and C.
Yeah.
You need to take care of, because it's going to be on you, not that person who's.
I was just curious on who owns, because I know a lot of times, the person will own the actual structure, but then they rent the land.
Yeah, owners that are going to live there, they're going to take care of it. And I don't think it's going to be a big use, because I believe a lot of snowbirds are going to be driving these.
That's what they said about this place.
Well, so I guess my other question, this, this property, does this have any water access?
No.
I don't believe it does.
I don't believe. But we all get.
So you would be a part of any association?
They would not be able to be a part of the association or use any of the beaches, except for John's Beach.
Which is on.
The other side.
Which is on the other side of town, which is across the lake.
Okay. That's, that's the public boat access, someone's.
Yeah, that's what anybody, that's what the residents in town have access to.
My next question would be, if we could find a lot, it's not buildable, but we have access.
No.
No, you wouldn't, it would, no, it would. I can tell you, there's no, any of the lots that are on the water, at least on our side, which would be closest to you, are association owned. And they're written, they're, the deed is specifically written in that they cannot be sold for anything other than association use and recreation use. So there, it's pretty, and even the lot that we own on Sunrise Drive, the deed is written such that it can be used for only recreational use. And it couldn't be used for anything other than recreational use for the association.
Well, maybe Donald will talk to the association.
Right, but if the, there's three associations, and if one of them owns.
I, yeah.
You're talking, you're talking like 200 people.
So I can, so I can tell you now, for the seven or eight years that I've been on my association board, that would not happen. Yeah, and that would be a whole different, yeah, yeah. And that would be a whole different, it would be a whole different discussion at a whole different meeting with a different group, but.
55 and older people.
Wait a minute, that's still for the young.
I'm 62, so I'm getting it.
So let's not just put these people, like, volunteers, because they can still.
What, what are you going to be saying?
You said 55.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's the, that's the main one. That's the line, 55 at the bottom.
Well, we're on the line, I think. I know that, but, like, it still strips.
It won't affect the school, because you don't have children there full time, but it could put an impact on the fire.
Fire, E and S.
Not, not because of medical issue, policing, it's just that anymore, another, any developer would cause that.
Right, so that would need.
Probably medical, maybe an ambulance. We could donate an ambulance, we could donate all kinds of.
I'm just saying, it's just somebody considering.
Well, we have an ambulance.
It's staff.
The issue is the coverage, is having coverage to be able to run the ambulance. Being in such a small town, it's not as easy as.
Right. It's all what?
Medical services are not, they're just, you know, any type of service like that, police, fire, EMS, they're just not.
Volunteers.
Yeah, well, we have, well, they, they're mainly volunteers, so.
So they're really not volunteers, they're part-time, on call?
All, all towns and cities are having issues getting coverage for medical, for ENT, for even fire and whatever. So, I mean, we're a small town that doesn't.
Pretty much is extremely connected, but the matter.
Wow, gee, I had this.
Again, but that doesn't mean anything at all.
That's, that's, yeah.
I can't, quick on calling, can't get covered over there. Yeah, it's a matter, it's a matter of personnel. Every town in this area helps each other out, because we're all short-staffed.
Yes.
It's not the competence, it's not the dedication, it's numbers.
Yes.
No, well, anybody do that?
What was your question?
So impact fees or any of that? Is that any?
That's a.
Could be.
Yes.
Now, I would encourage you to re-arch the ten, which is on page 31 of the zoning ordinance, an ask to open space conservation and cluster development. Let me read you this.
Well, just to help before you go on that, Vern Deegan? Well, Vern is an engineer, and his father, he passed away, he used to be a big company. And he's the one that came up with the numbers with the, the other regs, so we don't have to do this twice, remember me? He came up with these numbers on a mobile home. So the regs, he's, he's done all, he's done the homework, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, so let me read, let me read that to you. The purpose of this section, this is paragraph 10, open space conservation slash cluster development, whether it's 55, 25, and 30, it's three intents in my view. The purpose of this section is to allow, by the planning board approval, open space conservation, cluster development. The purpose of such development is to conserve agricultural forest lands, habitat, water quality, rural connector, not connector, that's my word, not. Rural character and scenic areas that might otherwise be lost through conventional development by encouraging environmental sound development of the land. Okay? To accomplish this purpose, greater flexibility and creative in design is encouraged. Specific objectives are as follows, master plan. I'm not going to be galling. Discourage development, stop consumption of rural agricultural heritage. So you go through the, you've got to follow. Uh, but there are, there are criteria in terms of what can be done, what can't be done, um, so forth and so on. It talks about development standards, maximum density in here, uh, parcel lot sizes, dwelling lot sizes, uh, sewage disposal system. I'm not gonna read these, I'm just gonna, you know, number apartment, dwelling units, landscaping, lighting, bike path, which is conventional bike path, which is great. Uh, utility, how are those gonna be installed in there? What are they gonna, what are they gonna do? Uh, you also, and you know, uh, for mobile home parks, I don't know what else to follow.
Yeah, fine, I, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. Do I have to follow state standards, which require certain specific, certain number of units per acre?
Our town makes no provisions for manufactured housing.
What's that mean?
Our town makes no provision for manufactured housing, so.
We rely on state.
How does this, how does this work? Are we gonna have to contract a high power?
State.
State dictates basically the, the, criteria for a park. It does not say, in other words, uh, land so many feet away, that kind of stuff, how many units you can put on per acre, uh, what they have to look like. We have, uh, we have a requirement that mobile home, manufactured home has to have a pad.
Yeah.
That's, that's in the building code. We, we go by the building code, so that's enforced by the government.
I'm just, perhaps I'm speaking out of turn here, but I just assumed that because we don't have provision for manufactured housing development, it is not allowed.
No, I, I was told that you can't, if it's, if, if it's not listed, you can't say no. You have to look at the project. That's recent.
So it'd be case by case?
In other words, if, the assumption was by us, me included, and the information I had from another planner, was that if it wasn't listed in the zone ordinance, anything, then it would not be allowed. That I've been told is incorrect.
For what law? You know, I'm not putting you on this.
I mean, six, six seventy-four, thirty-two, manufactured housing. Municipalities show forward reasonable opportunities to the site of manufactured housing. That's the state.
But we would be looking at this, John, talking from, like, under Article ten, which is the open space conservation plus development, because that's where.
That's one thing that I, that I would look at.
Yes. I, I agree, I agree that.
Even though it's fifty-five and older.
Six seventy-four.
Uh, that's, are you considering that elderly? Careful here, it's a low pressure.
I'm over the bathroom, I'm gonna rob.
Uh, elderly, uh, low, no, I don't want to say low.
I might send John.
Elderly or affordable house? The reason I ask that is the, in the ordinance.
All getting older.
Sixty-five and above.
Okay.
That's, if it's, now, that is, what that refers to, it's like, it's like the workforce housing program in the state, which basically, in my view, provides developers with money to reduce their costs of building, uh.
Well, we're not asking.
Okay, 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 so it's not that, okay, that's fine.
It's all self-funded.
Mm-hmm. Well, self-funded, like, whatever.
Well, it's.
Well, okay.
It's not state-funded.
No, okay, well, okay, that's fine. I'm just pointing that out.
But the funny part, you know, friends with Dr. Sanino, and, uh, the city, the, the city of Manchester is shy of four hundred thousand units, my fault, my fault, I dropped the party. That's what they wanna add into everywhere.
That's why I have so much money out there, from the federal government, not the state.
There's so many people moving on Massachusetts, moving more, more, a lot of the Manchesterites are moving more north, because they don't want all that, like, gathering stuff. So they're moving more north, it's concrete, you know, and stuff like that, that's happening a lot. You have people from New York or something set up, and they just kind of move it. And of course, as, as these numbers, right, it's a lot of affordable housing for people, so it, it gives people a place that, you know, in first-time home buyers, well, that's, but.
You could be, being very glad to be.
Yeah. So, uh, you know. So my question is this, because we don't wanna do all this, and you guys all have a good feeling. So we, because, you know, every time I did anything, I went up to my building inspector, see what they think, and what they say, and we take heart to that. We don't have to build this thing, but at the same time, we'd love to build it. You know, anything, follow this, you know, Milton, the, Milton White, Seth Fox, Alvin Bay, you know, it's a really good place to hang your hat, well, and for the songs.
Yes, it is.
Well, for the summers, but, so, but you're selling these as year-round.
Yes.
So you're, you're selling them as a year-round residence, so we can't assume that these people are gonna be snowbirds.
Absolutely, absolutely right, absolutely right, yeah. But we know that a percentage of that's really people in the summer.
Well, you know, half the town moves here to the summer, so that's why.
I don't know about half the town anymore. In the eleven years that I've been here, more than half my neighborhood is.
Yes, is, is flopped, just built.
Well, can I mention one more thing? Drainage?
Okay.
Well, you didn't mention it, but drainage is really important coming off of that, that lot, because it goes downhill.
Everything is entirely.
Something like, and actually drainage coming off that lot, in the past, has wiped out the road. So let's keep that top of mind.
It is, yeah, carved in all the.
I mean, honestly, I guess until we know how much of this is wetland, how much of, you know, what the, the land looks like for building, I mean, to put it, I think a hundred units is, would, would greatly impact that area. I mean, the, the traffic on the road on both New Durham and Silver Street, I have a little, I've got concerns, but infrastructure alone, I've got concerns with, for, you know, fire and EMS.
Well, do a traffic count, do all that stuff. Um, Vern Dickman has all, twenty-something years ago, he, even though the plan expired, he did the whole survey, all the FOCS, he did this whole thing. Never gonna put like thirty units or something. But the town changed to a bigger, more acreage per house. So my guy, when he did that, he had all the FOCS, so he's extremely.
What is, what is his ex, what is he, is he a planner, a designer, what is?
His, his father was the surveyor private.
So what is he?
He is an engineer.
Certified, what kind of?
Certified engineer, landed on it.
Okay.
So.
What might, what might help you is if he has a report file, we see nothing but a file.
Right, well, it's just.
We do have, again, that's nothing, again, you know.
So, uh, again, uh, our, my main concern is the number that I have to be on, uh, and that's a lot, a lot of units. So if, if he's done all the work in terms of it meets state regulation.
Yeah.
He looked at these, and it says it meets these, uh, maybe so. Uh, but, uh, I would like to see more information on what you plan to do, and I, I, I I think we have a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I understand your timeline, I get that, uh, but.
What is this time, what is your timeline?
You know, add it better way, or we, we get a.
We have a timeline and we don't have a timeline, depending on like, if it doesn't work this one, then there is another project out there as well, that's what it's, it's gonna be.
I, I, I mean, I, I've withdrawn the, the amount of units to go into that area is.
Is there certain amount, amount of the numbers you're looking for? No, it's just a matter of the details, without the hydrology, without the, the water. You know, we need, we need the figures to back it up.
There's more information that we need. I, I get your concept, I, I really do. Uh, and I think your idea of, of trails and so forth and so on, but for us to approve a project like this, we need a lot more information.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, unfortunately, or fortunately, that involves costs on your part, and you're not even the owner.
Correct.
So, uh, we, before, before we could even address that, uh.
Well, what's the, what's the standard, you got almost a hundred acres, what's the standard for you to build ten houses? How many acres supports ten houses with it?
Well, depends, because.
Depends on the wetlands.
Oh, yeah, of course.
No, but, right, so, yeah.
What's the standard?
The fair reason what I'm asking you is, let's say, if it's building a hundred lots, and everything else working out together, but it will be putting too much pressure on, on probably your side, that's a eight, hundred units.
Well, you gotta figure, it's a, a hundred units means a hundred wells, or well, a well that would support a hundred units.
Yeah, that supports.
And then you've gotta figure a hundred units, if, even if one unit had a vehicle, that's a hundred more cars on our roads.
Exactly, right, on an average, that one point five is a unit, just normal thing.
And, and so you've gotta figure, there's a hundred more cars coming in and out of those roads, which they're already become very busy. You know, the, the water that it would draw from all around, um, which could help or hinder, you know, depending on how wet it is over there, um, and then, you know, a hundred plus more people.
Those are the type of things that we would really look at, and, uh.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of, um, I would say yea or nay, I would just say I am not, I don't have enough information here, and I, I need more stuff, if you will. Um, so, you know, keep in mind, if you put ten lots on there, you're gonna have to build a road. For towns, fact.
Yep.
Just like Addisaway, you know, familiar with Addisaway, no, okay.
Or a private road that gets maintained by the people who live on that road.
Right.
So it's become an ancient or something like that.
If you did a private road, if you did a private road.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't like to see that, but, uh.
A private road?
No.
Well, I don't think you can do that. Well, I have a private, like, subdivision, a private road. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I'm arguing, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, but it's an option, you have, it needs to be about everything. It might not be an option.
Yeah, that, that is something we should investigate before we go forward, so.
So if everything qualifies, well, yes, that's, that's, because.
If everything qualifies, what do we need? We need, we need more, you know.
We need, we need information.
A site, a site plan would be, and I don't necessarily think this is considered, this.
No, no, this is.
The concept.
This is not even concept, so.
Right, so because we don't.
We have a total rough in all those things, if we want it, we can show it to you all. We have a bunch of other ones which have been done for twenty years or six, but it's still there. So all the token and all thing is already done.
Oh, I mean, I, I will say this, I mean, and I'll just be quite blank, because.
And that's what we have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I would say, go home, do your homework, do it very well, and do every single study, cross every T and dot every single I, because what you're looking to do is very altering for our area, and when the Butters notices go out, there's gonna be lots and lots and lots of questions. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of questions, um, but.
And we don't even know what the questions are.
Yeah, we don't even know what they are, just yet, because we don't have, we don't have really any details other than you wanna put a hundred manufactured homes.
For our part, to get it going, to get a good septic plan or something, to know if they can, they can handle that, and the water, if, can the land handle that water?
I mean, this, this would be, I mean, uh, this would entail a lot of expense on your part, when you don't even own the property. And I, I understand you gotta do your due diligence, before you lay down, I get it.
About thirty grand.
Well, okay, well, whatever it is, doesn't matter. Thirty grand, three hundred grand, three minutes, doesn't matter, you gotta do your diligence, so. And that could go all out the window, because we could say, no, we're not, we, we, we say no, because A, B, C, D. We can't, we can't make a decision.
Right, we can't, right, we can't make a decision based on you trying to.
And we can't say, if you give us this, we'll approve it, because we, we don't own it. Well, I, I know that's not clear.
Right. It's not, yeah, but.
I'm a dad of four kids, so it's like, I've always had to pay the bills, and when I had, I'd get a no sometimes. It's not no, it's just a maybe, you know, and I don't wanna put that, you got it, or you got it.
Well, we're not against the concept of, of development, which is, we need more information. Coming from your side from the beginning, so that way, oh, this is just like, it's gonna get that anyways.
Yeah, keep in mind that, that our job as a planning board is to maintain what, what our community wants the community to be. It's not a big role, uh, that's why we have five acres minimum lots. Uh, it used to be two, now it's five. Uh, that's why we have, recently pointed out, and that's why we have a weather policy. Uh, so that we don't do that. We're very sensitive in this community, I'm sensitive to the runoff, storm, runoff that occurs, um, uh, that runs into the lake, that runs into the Pico River, that runs down to the. So there's a, I have a lot of questions, I don't totally understand all the things that we would need, but I would, if your engineers looked at all these, and they said, yeah, this should go, no problem, well, maybe.
Right.
Maybe, maybe from an engineering point of view, but from our mission, if you will, as a planning board, is to ensure that we maintain our rural community, and that we don't impact, uh, our, our environment, we don't impact our citizens in terms of cost, extra cost. We're not pooh-whooing any, we don't pooh-whoo, no, we, we just wanna make sure that we abide. We abide with the principles of that, we're chartered to keep, that's right. So.
And, and I know you reference, um, things from twenty years ago, plans from twenty years, we know twenty years, a lot has changed in medicine. So it's, maybe you mentioned how that was a reference, but I think that always needs to be revisited, because you have twenty years ago, you probably only needed an acre, you know, you didn't need an acre to build a house on, and now we're at five hundred, two acres, so.
So I'm gonna play the devil's advocate.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna play the devil's advocate.
Devil's advocate, right. So if we meet all the, all the criteria, what I'm trying to get is some type of feeling, yeah. Another thought.
Protect the control surface, there we go. Look, if you meet all the criteria that we request, then we approve. And we, we can't, we can't say no, because we don't like it. We're here, we're here to abide by what is set in our ordinances here, and what's required in the cycling. Uh, you're, you're bound by what the state says in terms of the type of, of development that you're doing. If you meet all those, and we agree that we meet all those, I see no reason why we can't say yes. But if we don't agree, we can say no.
True, true, and that's what, that's what we're trying to have before we start investing, can you? Because money's fake, in, everywhere.
I don't have any money. It meant the other day.
Cause we're all over the week.
Payback a little bit.
We're all set for money.
So, any other questions?
No.
I don't think we, I hope we did it some kind of direction, I don't know maybe what you're looking for, but you got, you got the feeling, I think, right.
A lot of players might.
Yeah, I mean, again.
Without information, we can't say.
I mean, just saying, in our master plan, we got, we're trying to build good neighbors.
Correct.
Healthy communities.
Keep a small rural.
We like the rural feel, it's not, it's not a big city, it never will be, that's fine, but we like the town, and.
And we are, we are surrounded by a lot of, uh, more developed towns in the area. We're kind of, we're surrounded, kind of, in.
Like Metropolis and Brookfield.
Yeah.
Brookfield is, yeah, that's, you can talk about that over glass of beer. So, you got any other questions for us?
Maybe. I'm gonna lose my taxes, I'm gonna die.
That's, that, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't, I don't know, that, that's. I don't think that's in here, uh, but, you know, I, I, I can understand where you're coming from. I understand, you know, what we need probably is a hook and ladder, we need one of those.
The ones that'll stick.
The ones that scale.
But we need people to run it up, right? Very good. You all set?
Just one question.
Yes.
I know, a hundred is, is a bigger number, everybody's like, oh, it's a hundred units. Is there some other numbers you're looking for, which would be a lesser thing?
It's what the property can support.
But at the same time, we gotta say, right, we wanna keep it rural, we wanna keep it smaller.
We can't dictate, we as a board can't dictate the number, it's what the, it's what the, you know, the surveyors do come back and tell us the source, and they can say, this is what can be.
Your guys, you're gonna support it.
Right, that's not, I mean, he can't, which I don't understand, it's, it's ninety-seven acres. So they're putting a hundred units. So that's true per acre, that's right.
If you're only using fifteen percent. Yeah, that's what I'm doing, and we have, leaving you on a thing.
You know, in terms of what would the watts look like? I mean, you would, I don't know how big the watts would be, that you put.
Half acre. Almost half acre.
Half acre watts.
That's pretty good size.
That's pretty good, more than I know.
So it's not something that's skimby.
Not as much as me.
You have more than I do.
She does.
I didn't have a little. But you got thousands of acres. So I can't give you a number, I don't, I don't.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, as long as it's, it's the hundred number is not big, oh my god, this is hundred, it's not, that's the thing, that's what my feeling is coming.
It's a lot of density. Even though it's ninety acres, it's a lot.
If you guys have the science to back it up, you can say how it supports water, how it can support sewer, how it's supportive of traffic. I mean, you're gonna have a lot more information when people have questions, like these Butters, they're just gonna think a hundred, hundred houses right next on top of theirs.
And they're gonna see, they're gonna see, think a hundred cars and.
Hundred kids.
And that, and, and that's important for them to express, but what we go by
Well, what the board goes by and what the residents go by are a few different things.
Not necessarily.
That's what we, that's what we want more.
But we hope we do the right thing, that's why we're here.
Cut it out, cut it out.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you so much.
So much, appreciate it, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you for your, we appreciate your interest. All right, we'll read it, thank you. Okay.
No, no, as a matter of fact. Yeah. What am I adding? I'd be getting text messages right now.
Do you want your motion book?
I'll make a motion.
Don't run, don't run.
I made the motion that we would stack the July eleventh minutes and.
I'll second.
He spoke too fast.
She was already there.
Any discussion? Motion, here.
Hey, you can find some of the stuff away out of town.
Hey, did you hear what you were saying?
Well, I'm trying to contain myself.
I just want to explore.
Yes, she's, this, this right here is not the center, I can tell it.
She can tell.
Smoking her.
We can talk back for Pete. We can talk back, I, I just said like, she's like, you can see the little worry about it.
No, okay, communication. Katie, I need your help on this one.
Communication?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm starting to communicate. We receive, we receive two applications. One application is for a dredging permit for a property one fifty-three, now, state law says we can fill out the dredging film.
Like dredging, like dredging the lake or dredging?
This has to do with metals and building supply.
Yes.
Or the pond. The pond?
They're redoing the pond.
And, and that's, that they've already gone on, they moved on.
Well, this is an application that's submitted back in May, now fifteen, so there's probably already been something.
Yeah, it has been.
Try getting the log.
Okay, so this has to be signed, and it was signed by, on five fourteen. So, we don't respond, I don't think, we just say, okay, we, we have it. This goes back to the town and the people there for people who want to look at it.
Conservation Commission received their property, the conservation, conservation commission is, I believe, is the only authority that can stop that project, but they feel that it's important, water lines and water lines, but given the situation and the consideration of.
The idea is that they have water in case.
Right, exactly, so we just.
I assure.
I would appreciate it, if John had any comment on that.
Yeah, definitely, talk to the Butters.
So, I just got to ask you a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, but it's, it's important to talk about it, it was just.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about.
But we can choose not to comment. But we only have a certain period of time to do that.
Okay, we had another one, this is a Shore Land permit. And this was dated July fifteen, and I do not believe we're supposed to do anything with this one either.
That's interesting.
What is it?
Are we supposed to do anything? I don't think we are, I look up the statute.
We used to, but not anymore.
I look up the statute and it says we.
There's nothing in, it used to be in our ordinances to review, as you recall, because I denied you yours first.
Yes, you did, and.
Wait, what is that?
Well, then, you know what I did?
You bought, you ran the state legislature and joined a recommitting.
You know what I did then, I said, okay, I put in bracts.
Oh, was that, oh, I don't, I don't, I still say.
What's that application for?
Huh?
What is that for?
Okay, this, this is for somebody on Lake Shore Drive, one twelve Lake Shore Drive, he wants to replace a deteriorating retaining wall. It's map, it's lot four, map four lot ninety-seven, one twelve. It's down by Peter Chicklin.
It's Peter Paramo.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we, I'm gonna, when we get to you, then I'm just gonna let you know that this is what's happening, and we're, we're not supposed to do anything, this is supposed to be in the town hall where people can look at.
Does it say anything about the conservation commission being on the, usually it's.
So we can't.
I looked up today and statute, and I truly find.
It's fine, no, we don't, you know, we used to be part of it, and now we're not, and that's fine.
Well, state, state does, has changed a lot of laws on these things because they slow them down.
So for the repainting wall, for, we have no say over it, is that all state managed to make sure it's done correctly?
Yeah, oh yeah, they, they can't, you've got pictures here. Yeah, the state will say, this is what you gotta do now, does the state inspect that?
We used to.
Well, they don't have the people, all their, all their people.
Kate will do it.
No.
Middleton.
Building.
I used to, I used to do that.
Well, the building inspector.
Listen.
Well, this is what it looks like.
The planning board used to have.
It's probably one of the biggest pieces of property down on Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah.
Full half acre.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna say it's a half acre.
That's why you should never put wooden walls up, although they're cheaper.
Two walls on.
It's like three quarters of an acre. That's, that's.
That's a Palais.
Oh, I know, oh, that's, that's, oh, I know it from, yeah.
Keeps two doors down from where Caleri used to be.
That used to be a nice.
It, it's a, it's a nice property, it's just aged. Well, no, it's still nice, it's just, you know, like everything, it, you know, time and weather and.
It's kinda like fifty-five plus, kinda like.
Like my eyes.
You know, as, as a sign, there was a fifty-five plus condo roof just off of the exit on Main Street, you know where you get off to go to Home Depot, and you come down.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But you, I don't know, what is that road that goes between Hammond and goes up? Ten Run Road or?
No, no, it's from, was it Ten Run?
Ten Run.
Yeah, Ten Run Road.
Okay, in there, you, you barely see it, there was a complex back there, and they set it at fifty-five and over, well, overtime.
Overtime would happen, we all know.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And then, and then there's some legal things about the children as well.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So I, that's, that needs to be looked into.
Yeah, well, you can, you can have all the good intentions, right?
Yeah, his.
But enforcing it is not always a thing.
And it's not this town's strong law either.
Yeah, HOA, I mean, if you look at a development like Tarow State, that HOA there, they manage that thing like really tight.
How old is it?
Tarow State?
Yeah.
What did you, what was your question?
I don't know, how old is, how long?
Oh, they've been there a while.
One year?
Okay, that's fine, that's, that's a ballpark.
Beautiful place.
And where is it?
It's on San Falls Road.
Right, right before where they're gonna put the new school.
Right, and it's right before, it's right before the White Hall Road where you go to. And they have, they have manufactured homes in there that are two hundred fifty dollars dollars.
More than that.
Or more than that.
That is fine.
Well, the real estate is, the house across the street from me, that's a little fur.
And that is in what town?
Rochester.
Rochester.
Yeah, and I, they probably have ninety.
So wait, if he wants to put a hundred manufactured homes on that property.
Wait a minute, you want this in the minutes?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll talk about it later.
Okay, no, I was just thinking like.
Well, we can, we can. Well, you know, we're looking into the business here, nobody can have that conversation.
Okay, I have a copy of the budget.
Okay.
Not the budget.
That's next week.
I still don't understand, but you, you tell us.
So it says, we budgeted thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six, we expended twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and fifty, we still have eleven thousand dollars to spend, in change, eleven thousand, ten, eleven thousand ten dollars and six cents, to be exact. We are, we're not over budget, we're at eighteen percent, eighteen and a half percent, and what are we, we're eight, nine months into the year, we should be almost one hundred and quite there, so we're like, probably like sixty-seven percent.
But we, we're gonna have some expenses if we get involved with the attorneys or.
Right, well, we gotta spend many from legal, and we have seventy-five hundred dollars.
So with that being said, with having that much money, the, I forget what the terminology was that was used, the person that would help with the ordinances, was it a planner?
We have, we have to make that decision pretty soon, we're gonna start planning.
Seventy-five. Circuit rider?
Was it, was it?
It was a circuit rider.
I mean, knowing that we have that much money, we have.
Yeah, but we're also going to probably need to have some.
Well, any, any ord, first of all, circuit rider can help you write the ordinance, the one that we were talking about was the workforce housing ordinance, we'll talk about that when we get there, so. I'm gonna get back to that, I'm gonna get back to that, just why, I just wanna bring the budget up each time.
Well, just like now, we got the money and we put all the.
May I ask a question?
No.
Someone's got a different agenda.
Oh, we need a, we need to replace, we need, would be nice if the zoning map was replaced. The zoning map, we, you can see it, it's on Stratford Regional Planning website, they have a zoning map.
Want a bigger map?
Would be nice to have a larger display, and now that we're getting the, the town lines updated, maybe it's something the planning board, because I don't think the CBA has money in their budget for maps and stuff like that.
Are there other maps that can be replaced?
Yeah, we have a lot of our maps, but I mean.
The zoning map should be replaced, it's the one that says this is where a residential, this is, and I think you could, you could make it lots of specific.
You want a big one, so that's got a grant or whatever it is.
That's, what is it, it's been so long, what, what's the guy, the guy's name in Stratford Regional, but they still don't. I can see him, but I can't think of his name.
Yeah, he wears his jeans.
Fifty-five, okay?
No, it's, it's like Grant.
That's his, that's one of the guys, he works for him.
All right, well.
I have my cops in jeans.
Notice that.
They have to remember.
Okay.
Is he a passage wash?
Tyrol?
No, let's notice here. Okay, you had requested all the building permits. They're here.
Do you have a copy each?
Yeah, well, we're.
Well, we required, we requested the last.
We requested those, those prints, are those prints, those building permits that you circled, that was June or July.
Right, that were in the Lake District because they probably.
We wanted to know if you met the setbacks, if you looked at the setbacks, that kind of stuff. So how do you wanna do that, you wanna sit here until ten o'clock and watch these? Or you wanna keep these up at the planning board office, and you can go look at them, what do you wanna look at?
We can all look at them, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here, so I'm not gonna do that right now.
Can I ask a question?
You?
Yes, Katie. So at one time I had received a copy of a list of every building permit that had been issued. Why isn't that online?
What?
The building permits, the listing that I got, why isn't that online?
Does it need to be on it?
I should think it's public information, I should think that if you see your neighbor doing something, you should be able to just go to the website and say, oh, they got a building permit.
It might relieve some.
It's a software program, that's pretty easy to run that, so.
No, but I mean, so, we can, we can potentially work on it.
I should think it should be, and I'll tell you also, I don't understand why people who get building permits are not putting up their big yellow or big pink or big. We, that always used to be the base, so you, you put a big thing in your windows, say you got a building.
Still have to do that.
Well, I didn't realize that, because I didn't, I haven't seen it since.
That's the display.
You said enforcement is known on its train. But you're right.
In terms of, in terms of plans and stuff, I have talked through, applications should be up online.
Yeah, I should think, and then that would alleviate, then not having your big sign.
So, I, I, for your notification, I am in discussions with the powers that be and the worker be, how to do that.
Good, that's wonderful, thank you.
I mean, the worker be.
The hours should be.
She's the power.
I didn't, I don't have anything to do with it, but I'm.
So are you looking to see if they have the proper setbacks over?
Well, this is, the one that I'm kind of interested in is this one right here, this.
Which one?
The one on Spurs.
Oh, isn't that funny?
The ones on Spurs, because those are the ones that they showed, commented that one of our meetings that. I, I will be the first one to take a look, because.
You got those. If you're finished with those, or, or, now look at it, just put them up.
On the Google address?
That's such a mess, okay, that's my fault.
No, that's okay.
Just stick it up there so that other, other people wanna come up there and look at it, yeah. Okay, report of members, what that means is, I believe we're, you, we really have to get an earnest on, on our ordinances that we're going to do, so I think we have a workshop on.
September eighteenth?
Yeah.
No, no, nineteen.
All right, I knew I was on the other side of the day.
It's a, it's a week after our meeting, I just checked.
The nineteenth, yeah.
Okay, so nineteen, done with.
So, we should think about, you know.
Can we, can we determine which ones we want to record?
Yes, yes, because I don't think we have time or the energy to do all of them that we wanted to. I have talked to Janet about workforce housing, and she is leaning toward we don't do any. I don't know about that, based on what.
I was ready for the moment. I would agree with the moment.
You would disagree with the moment?
No, I would agree with, for the moment.
Yes, I'm not saying let, let, not do something, but at the moment.
I think we just.
Leave it as it is.
Come on.
Is our workshop at six thirty?
I think it was six.
I think it's six.
Six, okay, I just want to put in the right time.
Oh.
So, the other one is Suffolk. And what was your, your?
I was, B and D, Air B and D.
Air B and D. The Suffolk one, I can tell you right here, we need public hearing on that. We need public hearings at all.
Yeah.
But that one is the most important. And that's not going to be one.
We need public input.
Well, that's what I mean, public input. Now, what we have to do, when we, and I, I'm advising this because I've seen what other towns have done. We got to, why we, we have to really explain why we back it up for that. You can't just say, well, we think it's a good thing for the environment, we don't want you to dirty up the neighborhood. That's not going to work. So, that's, that's going to take, that's going to take more research. So, we're going to, we're going to form a subcommittee with Kate Fazare, head of Suffolk.
Head of local. Head of Suffolk, I love the title.
Suffolk.
She's the name.
She's the Suffolk queen.
She knows.
Name.
Okay.
Did New Durham pass theirs yet?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's done a long time.
Okay, it was.
The town of, ah, Gruber.
Newbury?
Newbury, up north, up north.
I know.
Newbury?
No, no, Sunup.
Oh, yeah.
Sunup passed it. But the town, the town next to them wanted more public input. They're leaning that way, but they turned it down this year, so they want more.
But why would we do that?
They, the, the story I get is, I think it's Newport up there. Agrees on the concept, they wanted more input in terms of what they're looking for. So, so, this is going to be a monumental project, so we will discuss that, how far we want to go. And you may have to do it next year.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
You don't want to dig too deep.
You've spent your. You said that a beach, colored like those with a corona.
Right.
Okay.
It's a funny time of winter.
Can't drink on the beach, so it'd have to be a gin and tonic in a coffee cup. I wonder if you got that, that thing called gin and tonic.
Can you do this?
So, any questions, we'll take care of that as we go. Just keep looking at those things. If you see an error, mark it, I'm going through them with a bit. Other business, any other comments, Kate, you got any other business? Not right now, that's good.
No, she, he shut me down, no.
Okay, member comment. I have a member comment. Anybody have a member comment?
No, go ahead and get member comments.
All right. I have, I have submitted my letter of resignation to the planning board.
Yeah, I got that email.
Effective February twenty eighth.
If we don't talk about it, it's going to happen, right?
If we don't vote on it.
No, you can't, no, you don't vote.
Make a motion to deny that reservation.
Nah, nah, nah.
If you're going to talk about it, you got to talk to my man. So, I think it's time for me to retire. I've been involved with a lot of things.
Would you still be a member at large, but just not a, would you still be going to, would you be going to?
Some of them are, you know, many times I would be here.
Well, okay, but if you're an alternate, maybe? You can be.
I have to think about it.
All right, well, you have plenty of time.
I have plenty of time. I want to stay until whatever we do, we finish up for the time.
Well, thank you.
I would like to see the site plan and the traffic study.
What?
For its renovation.
Oh.
I'll give you the site.
Never mind the wetlands.
I think the traffic study.
Want a site plan?
The Stratford study is going to cut down tremendously.
I can give you a, a site plan that, that would blow your mind away, and a traffic study? All I'd be doing is going up to maintenance building supply, Home Depot, and low, that's what I'd get. Maybe, maybe farmer's kitchen for permits or something.
Can we get that in writing? If you'll be right there next to Kate.
So, so you know, I have, I have submitted my resignation to every entity I'm involved with except Sunrise Water Show.
State.
I resigned from the Leagues Committee in State. I resigned from the Gego River Advisory Council. These are all, all later. I mean, they're not today.
If we subsidize, you go into Michael Island, maybe?
Lock the door, that might change around here. That, that's all.
It's definitely for maybe, you know.
No, because you're going to have to find somebody to go in there. They'll start averaging, you have, have a job there.
Have a job, okay.
People can come to the ones that actually give money.
Have a job there.
Oh, I think I have it in there.
We're going to, we're going to provide, we're going to provide dinner. So, speak outside box. We're going to have a pizza party, and we want you to come because we want to talk about the lack of your volunteering.
My participation. All right, I have no comment.
Okay. Any other comments from members? All right, do I hear?
I'll make a motion at seven forty-nine.
So, who, so is that it?
To adjourn?
Any discussion? Motion cleared, meeting adjourned at seven forty-five.